Yep, as it is here, okay.
Yep.
And just, what's the ballpark of the, what the, that delta would be for the cost, full cost of running the preschool? Just ballpark, I've not asked for the exact dollar figure.
About a million, total, I wanna say about a million, right?
I would think close to there if we're-
I think it's right around there.
Meaning that there's about six hundred thousand dollars special education costs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I think that's important for everybody to know, otherwise it's, if you just look at that, it looks like it only costs us four hundred, four hundred thousand dollars to run the preschool, which is certainly not-
Correct, right.
And Paul, I think that's a good point, when we think about making more of the rooms integrated, they're playing that dual role of a special education teacher as well as a general teacher. So they're supporting both students in the classroom, and so their salaries are moving into those two different lines.
Yeah, like I said, I thought it was important to make sure we also say, it doesn't just cost us four hundred thousand dollars to run the preschool, it's a lot more than that, so.
Yeah. So this is where we fall for the current enrollment, we do have a waitlist right now that we are keeping in contact with families, if any changes happen. We hold a registration fee at this point in the year, but we don't start collecting payments until August first. So we know that some families may be moving in and out of town, or life circumstances may change. So we wanna make sure that we have opportunities to contact, you know, families on the waiting list and allow them to utilize any open positions that may happen over the summer.
How many people do you have on the waiting list?
We have about eight right now, and their preferences vary, some are looking for the four day a week morning session for three year olds, and then some are looking for full day. So I've been calling all the families personally and saying, this is what we have open, it might not have been your preference, but has anything changed where you might wanna utilize something different?
So, just thinking about it, it really doesn't touch directly on the budget, but I sure remember from when I was working at daycare. Early on, the idea of having till August first to sort of feel like you're up in the air can be a scary thing.
It is.
And I guess the other half of that is, for as long as people are able to change their mind up until August first, relatively small financial penalty, right? Because it's just a registration fee.
Yes, that's very true.
It would seem that we're maybe lacking certainty in this, like this is a good projection for where we are right now. But is there any ability potentially to move that August first date up to June first as an example, or something else that would give a certainty as to how many people are coming? And also give certainty to the families on the waiting list that perhaps if something unexpected, you know, we're not gonna be able to offer them a spot.
I think that's things that we wanna continue the conversation, you know, it is different than a private preschool, where you, some preschools even go into contracts. Where you're financially bound for the year, or we do ask for a thirty day notice if you do withdraw and things like that. But that is a very valid concern, that you're only losing a hundred and seventy-five dollars if something changes. And it's the variability of preschool that we've been, I would say those eight on the waiting list, I am in contact with every few weeks, just letting them know if anything's changed. And while I'm optimistic right now, I do have to be aware that there probably are gonna be some changes over the summer. Where we'll be seeing if people are still available, or if things have changed, so the budget could be reflective of that. But I think building it this way based on our actual enrollment will help us then saying, we're gonna budget for a hundred and ten, or whatever it might be.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the budget, given where we are, and what we're thinking about, is there a way to manage the registration process and commitment process? To a point where that budget gives us more certainty earlier than later, that's all.
I would definitely be open to that. Yeah, we could definitely look at maybe a new system or process through that for the following year. And then as we talked about back in January, and it continues with preschool not being a mandated service. And just looking at all of the variables that could be impacting the budget and the enrollment, similar to that concern just even on the registration process. We only know our early intervention referrals, and that's children that may be identified with a special need or a unique profile. We get notified when they're two and a half, but then we start to be, become involved and meet the child and the family ninety days before they turn three. And I have only been alerted until the end of July, so we could have some more students, I would anticipate, getting those over the summer, that will need to be doing evaluations. And as you know, once they qualify and they turn three, we need to have a space available. So if you go back to our enrollment, we do have those special education placements available, and we'll be open to kids as they turn three.
So those referrals are the ones that are turning, uh-
Turning three.
Turning three, uh, at the end of, by the end of-
Or at any point during the year, so that's the real challenge, that's different from the Warren or any other school where you'd have a hard and fast, they would go into kindergarten. Like, I qualified a student yesterday that is turning three on May seventeenth, so even though we only have three weeks of school left, they will start school the day after they turn three. And I have to make sure that there's an available spot for them, and the services can begin. So with that being said, like I just mentioned, we still have thirteen students currently in the evaluation process between now and the end of the school year. So those numbers could change as we just look at what we were predicting for September, and then I could see those numbers growing. I did kind of pull the EI referrals, which is one way we find out about students that may be requiring some level of special education services. We also get parent requests, we also have community partners such as daycares, doctors' offices, they may call with child find concerns that we may evaluate. But our evaluations over the last three years have increased, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, we had twenty-one early intervention referrals and thirteen parent requests. To current as of today, we've had twenty-three EI referrals and eighteen parent requests. And they may qualify, they may not, they may qualify for just, you know, service only, or they may qualify for a classroom placement with us, and that all is determined based on the evaluation. So lots of variables that could change what our numbers and our enrollment needs are. But presenting in a positive way from the program model, I think we're very happy with the enrollment from the community. And trying to meet the needs of those few families that are still on the waiting list, and then having plenty of opportunities for community kids that may be identified with a level of need, and having that support in there. And I think the business office and Office of Student Services so far are pretty happy with the budget as it's presented. So we'll continue to utilize that support moving forward when those variables change and challenge us.
Now, if, if more, if you get more that are identified and needing, needing services, will that change the number of peer role model seats you're gonna want in the program? Or do we have space for that, or are there concerns there?
It could, yeah, it's definitely something that we wanna look at, and if we're building it based on actual numbers, that is something that we're gonna be going through some growing challenges. And seeing what those needs might be, but we do have, you know, opportunity to be reflective and see if we get a bump of EI referrals, how we'll be supplementing opportunities for inclusion or reverse inclusion. Bringing in community peers and play groups and things such as that, so we have a lot of opportunity, which is really nice. And adding the third duly certified room gives us a lot more opportunity to spread the needs across it, and really work towards making that a more integrated setting across all of our classrooms. That's it.
All right. Nicole, welcome. We'll ask for your sports report in a minute. We're talking about the, um, so we're talking about the preschool budget, don't go away yet, we haven't voted, Jenny. Don't leave before you get the money in your hand. So do I have a motion to approve the budget for the preschool program?
I move to approve the budget for the Ashland preschool programs for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented.
Go second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? It's three zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thanks, Kathy and Barbara.
Student travel request, A E just to Cape Town, South Africa, February twen- uh, February fourteenth to twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
Correct, this is the second year, second opportunity for our trip, our students to go to South Africa. If you remember, Dorian came a couple of years, probably two years ago, right, that came and presented the Breaking the Barriers group going and working. This is the same trip, and same chaperone, Lindsay Hogan, they had a wonderful experience, and we're fully supportive of the trip again. They have their paperwork in proper amount of time, we still need to work on-
We can give them gold star for like being nine months ahead.
Lindsay's pretty good, but she was, we still have to change one of these-
Friday.
Yeah, thank you. We have to change one of these papers in here, but not, nothing that impacts your vote, but I noticed it when I was going through the form, so.
So I had a question, so, looks like they haven't got a lot of the details yet, are they, are they submitting it now so they could start fundraising and things like that?
Correct. And get all the finalized details, like, she gave you a short at the back, like an itinerary of potential travel dates, and so they need to get it approved so they can get it.
And this is going through hammer and chisel again?
Yes.
Okay, the form should probably say that, it doesn't reference them at all.
There is, there is a place on, um- Page two.
Yeah, I thought it said somewhere in there.
The chaperone issue.
Hammer and chisel staff on the trip makes this more-
Hammer and chisel staff.
It, I agree that it doesn't specifically state that they're the partners.
Yeah, that, that doesn't, that doesn't say that they're the-
The partners, yeah.
Okay.
The facilitators of the trip, so.
Okay, understood.
So why don't, you want, I don't know if you wanna address that in a motion, Paul, if we could do it, it's just-
No, I, I, I think this is, this is more, uh, an initial, um, approval so they could fundraise for it, um, and so they, you know-
If we, if we voted now, I don't think it would come back to us for another vote, based on, you know, clean up paperwork, so I just wanna make sure people are comfortable enough, given we have plenty of time, um, with what's being presented and voting on it, based on that information. Either that, or, you know, you could, we could approve it subject to further review of the paperwork, if you want. Um, I'm not particularly concerned about it personally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I, I think, I think it should be in there, and so I, I think we can approve it and just say, hey, you know, to mention it to Jim and Paul, that, you know, to-
Yep.
You know, because quite frankly, most of the, you know, they don't have, even where they're staying, right?
Right.
Uh, they're saying, yeah, we're staying in, in Cape Town, like, okay, yeah, that's, it doesn't help very much, so. There's not a lot of detail, um, so we can approve it pending that stuff, like, you know, it says restricted hours, yes, returning, but they don't even know when they're returning, and it actually looks like they're probably gonna be, on the restricted timeframe leaving, because they're not even leaving until after school.
Right, so they, not, all those specific details can't be finalized until-
Right.
So, I mean, it seems, I guess I'll look for consensus of the committee on this, that we'll vote on, on approval of the trip, so they can, as you say, with the fundraising, if something material changes-
Bring it back.
Um, you know, leave, I'll leave it to you and Paul to, to let us know, and then we can vote on those details if necessary later.
And then ju- so that, oh, yeah, yeah.
Are you okay with that approach, both of you?
Yeah.
And then as it progresses, are they handing it into Kelly, Kelly, all the details and stuff, or when they-
It goes to Kelly and then Paul and myself.
And then, yeah, as those detail, okay, yeah.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Yep, I move to approve the student travel request from Ashland High to travel to Cape Town, South Africa from February fourteenth to the twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
And we'd love to have them come and present.
Oh, yeah, that was great last time.
That was, yeah, I, I thought, that's a trip I wanted to personally.
Sounds fantastic, too.
Right, well, and, and I know that they also then did, um, a similar, um, event here, where they, where they took people through, uh, like a, like a market setting for shopping and stuff, I can't remember the details of it, um, that, uh, that they did here. Kind of, kind of mirroring, mirroring what they did down in, in South Africa, so.
All right, uh, next up on the agenda is Mr. Adams' superintendent report.
Yeah, just real quickly, uh, since we had vacation in between the, the, the last meeting, so not, a lot has happened, uh, since then. Uh, Mr. Vier and I were just at a, a job fair over in Hopkinton, it was going well, uh, town meeting is next week. I met with Mr. Herbert on Monday, or on Tuesday, uh, just to discuss, you know, the items that are on the, uh, the articles on the, on the town warrant and, and, you know, emphasize and continually emphasize the, the critical need for, uh, citizens to come out to town meeting and to participate. And, uh, while quite often, we might have conversations within the community when we're battling over budgets, uh, and we're in a good position because of our funding through the state, et cetera. Um, it's, there are so many articles on there that are really critical to the development of the town, uh, not only from an operating and a budget, budgetary standpoint. So, uh, just wanna emphasize that that's coming up, uh, next week, and we need to, you know, uh, those who are out there watching and listening, encourage your fellow citizens to participate in a democratic process of, of town meeting.
And just while you're talking about town meeting, I think as a matter of course, we're gonna have a, a meeting posted for immediately before town meeting, just in case something comes up that would require us to, to act before town meeting, but at this point, we don't foresee you need to do that.
That's correct, that's right.
The town meeting is May first, seven o'clock.
May first, seven o'clock, Ashland High School auditorium, so, that's all I have.
That's all you have.
Yep.
Mr. Vier?
Thanks.
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
Ms. Bates?
Would you like to hear about the warrants?
I would love to hear about the warrants.
You want?
I think we need to.
You need to-
I'll just read it from my phone, thank you. Uh, between April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of three hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred four dollars and ninety-three cents. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents, revolving expenses of two hundred eleven thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-three cents, meals, tax expenses of two hundred twenty-four dollars and two cents, and grant expenses of two thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars and no cents. Finally, I authorized payroll in the amount of one million, one hundred two thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
I love it.
All right, consent actions, approval of minutes, minutes of April tenth, two thousand nineteen, anybody have any issues there?
I had sent an update to Erin, just to clarify, just because of the MSBA process, uh, related to the designer selection panel. Uh, it had said that, um, the OPM is a member of the panel, they are not, um, so I just gave her some clarifying language, so it'll read. Uh, there's a sixteen-member design selection panel, which includes superintendent, the town manager, and one school committee member. Each member of the design selection panel votes on, uh, the designer selection, which means we have three out of sixteen votes, so I just updated it to, to reflect that.
Is that the update that we've received, or is that?
It's, it's, it's not, it's not in what you have, it's, it's the end of the-
Is it the policy?
On page four, um, it's at the bottom of that paragraph related to designer selection. So it's just update to that, because it said that, uh, that was the only update I had.
Okay, Kathy, do you have any changes?
Nope.
So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of April tenth, two thousand nineteen as amended?
So moved.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, passes three, nothing. Uh, acceptance of gifts.
Thank you, we have a couple, um, Clydeanne Torres, a hundred and eight dollars for the reality fair, uh, wait, forty-eight, five dollars, eighty-five cents, uh, eighty-five cents for student council, Ashland Business Association, a hundred dollars for the reality fair, for a total of three hundred twenty-five dollars, eighty-five cents.
We have a motion to accept the gifts and donations as presented.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, passes three, nothing. All right, number updates, let's start with Nicole, how did it go today?
We lost, we got mercy, it was not a fun game.
Ah, no!
Who were you playing?
We're two and two, so we're, we played, um, Norwood, who's new in the league this year, so it's the first time we've seen them.
Yeah.
They're a bigger community, I think.
It happens. Um, we're two and two, which is good, so as long as we stay at fifty percent, then we'll make it to tournament, which is cool.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, I went to the school start time meeting with Mr. Terry, and that was very fun, I was the guinea pig.
He said you spoke very well, right?
Yeah, we heard it went well.
Yeah, it was a good time.
I sung your praises while you weren't here at the last meeting, because I knew you were, uh-
Thank you, it was a fun time. Um, let's see, our Out of the Darkness walk is this Saturday, um, from nine to twelve at the Ashland High School, so come on out and support us, town too. Um, let's see, anything else, oh, I'm going to B C. Ah, congratulations really, thank you.
Congratulations.
Excellent, good job.
And, yeah, that's really it.
Or we should say congratulations to B C.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
What, what helped you make that decision?
Um, so over break, I went and visited a friend who's there currently, and I went up to University Rochester, and to UMass, and back to Northeastern, and I just, my mom said, all right, within the next hour, you are deciding, and I said, okay, B C, and so, yeah.
That's awesome.
Put him in an alphabetical order and just choose, chose the first name.
Yeah.
Yeah, most cases, the B guy I'd have issue, but, you know.
See, that's awesome, great.
And, and I want you to know that all the folks at Dover Sherburne who wants you to do the video on the school start time thing, would please just stay local. So you can come back every week and, you know, and they have followed up, and, you know, we'll talk later.
Perfect.
Hey, great, thank you, Paul?
Not much with, uh, with the school break and stuff, I did, uh, uh, you know, cram into the packed house that, uh, Michael and Jen had for the warrant review session, I'm being facetious, it was, it was not packed. Um, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's about it, not, not, not much going on.
Yep, I, I don't have, no updates.
Nothing here either, I was, uh-
Pretty quiet.
I was gonna say, it's good to have a vacation there.
Yeah.
All right, action items.
I don't think any of it has changed, right?
No, I, I do have a note that I'd like to read about, though, with the action items, on my own, that I wrote a note, but, so I, I think as we usually round out the year, we bring the schools in to talk about school improvement plans.
Oh, yeah.
And what I'm recommending to the board is that they come in the fall, uh, as the blueprint will be finalized this summer, uh, through the school committee retreat, uh, I've received comments back from the educational staff, they've had it, I'm, I'm tweaking it. Mr. Vier and I are gonna spend next week cleaning it up a little bit, sending it back out to the community, holding another Zoom session, then taking it back in, uh, to, to re, you know, repurpose it and finalize what we're going to do with it, and then have it ready for the school committee in the summer, eh, for, you know, the final, um, approval. Then, sending it back to the principals in the summer, so that they can finalize their school improvement plans to tie back into the blueprint, which is our goal, right? So they have some, um, things already, uh, on their improvement plans that aren't necessarily related directly to the blueprint, but they need to tie it in.
So is, is the work that you're, you, they're gonna do after we approve the blueprint-
Yep.
gonna be not substantive to what is in their improvement plan, but more, you know, adjusting it so it ties into the pillars? Because, the reason I ask that is, they work with the site councils-
Right.
Which are school year, which are school year based, right, so-
So they will have, it's a good point, and we talked about it today at our admin meeting, uh, and they didn't feel comfortable presenting it, uh, without having the blueprint finalized. Uh, and they wanna come and give an update, so they'll come in over in May and June to give the substantive piece, and then they'll tie it back into the blueprint. So they don't want an approval, everything, I think everything will be done.
Great, and, and that's where I was going with it, is, as long as it's, okay, we, we don't, the blueprints are moving target, the-
Correct.
The substance of the school improvement plan is gonna be finalized by the group that's been working on it.
That is correct.
And then over the summer, they're adjusting it as necessary to align with the blueprint only, and it's not gonna-
Absolutely, that's correct, I, I just don't want, I didn't want the school committee thinking they were approving the school improvement plans, uh, because they didn't wanna present it without it being tied back into the blueprint.
Yep.
So we should still anticipate a, um, an update and explanation of the substantive they're working on-
Right.
But the formal approval will be done in the summer through the fall.
Correct, so they will be here, the principals are actually negotiating right now who's coming when, uh, at the end of May and June, uh, timeframes. Uh, those two meetings, before we get to the last meeting in June, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have all the principals in, it's just their, their job, keep their position.
Just for an update, okay.
Like Ms. St. Karp with graduation coming up, probably doesn't wanna go until after, the, the first meeting in, in June, which is after graduation, so.
Anybody have other concerns about that approach?
No, it, it was just that, you know, I wanna make sure that it was based on the work that with the, the current groups have been doing, right?
Correct.
But I, I, you know, I was, Laurie's agenda is set, but, yeah, sorry, I don't see a problem doing that one.
Yep, that was it, I just, I had a note that we talked about today at our admin meeting, so, that's all, yep.
Anything else on the action items? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sir, moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Miles.
Three, nothing?